As I said, a special call meeting. I might mention also, we are being streamed live by Facebook and YouTube, so all of our proceedings tonight can be viewed from home by any of our citizens that choose to do so, and we welcome them to this process also. The reason for our meeting tonight is to hear the appeal from Glanton Forest Equity LLC on a decision made by the Randolph County Planning Board to deny a Dollar General store on Highway 22. Jay Dale will give more particulars of that as he presents the case tonight. So, again, we welcome you, and we will move through this process in time, but whatever is required for our speakers to be heard tonight. So, again, welcome, and at this time, I will ask Jay Dale to present the matter to this board and to the public.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. As you stated, this evening, we're here to hear the appeal of Glanton Forest Limited Liability Corporation of Raleigh, North Carolina. They're requesting to rezone five acres located on North Carolina Highway 22 North, directly across the street from the Grace Chapel Elementary School, from its current zoning of RA Residential Agricultural to HCCD Highway Commercial Conditional District. The proposed zoning would specifically allow a proposed retail store, a Dollar General, as per their site plan. This was heard on October the 5th by the Randolph County Planning Board. They voted unanimously to deny the request. Here we have the application. This is what we refer to often as the dot map, showing the location. As you can see, it is directly across from the school. Same location with some zoning in the area. This is the site plan showing that it would access on 22, which means it would come out directly across where the access for the school is. Here's a, I think this is a really good one, aerial photograph showing the location of the school and the proposed site of the Dollar General. And finally, we have some photographs of the site itself. Picture number one is just a vacant lot, as well as the surrounding area of the school and residents directly adjacent to the zoning request. And, Mr. Chairman, that is an overview of the request.
All right. Do any of the commissioners have any questions of Jay relative to the process, or anything else pertinent to the request that you might have some questions about?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question or two, and I hope, I think you'll be able to answer fairly quickly. Does this organization own this property? Have they bought it?
They have not bought it. It's currently owned by Mr. Russell Lineberry. He's the property owner. I understand the sale is probably contingent upon the rezoning.
That's what I need to know.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I'm assuming septic, all that kind of, no water, no sewer.
No, there's just, they'd be putting a system out there for the place, as I understand it.
That's a little out of our realm tonight.
It is.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk, do we have some folks to sign up to speak tonight?
Yes, we do.
All right, this is a public hearing, and if you're here tonight and you want to be heard, it's not necessary that you sign up. I think what we're going to do is take those who did sign up, we'll take them in that order, and then, once we do that, we'll come back to the rest of you, anyone that wishes to be heard relative to this. We will ask first for those who speak for the request, and then, secondly, we will ask for those who speak against the request. Does the petitioner, would you like to present first, so we know kind of the other side of this issue?
Normally, we begin with the applicant.
Yes, with the applicant.
Yep.
Yes.
How do I do the?
Show up just a minute.
Left and right, just pretty self-explanatory, I guess. All right.
And you should have control there.
Right, just a second. Good evening. My name is George Venders. I'm manager of Glanton Forest Equity. I've been in front of this board a number of times in the past. We have been a Dollar General developer for about 15 years. Just a brief overview of the project. We are proposing a 10,640-square-foot retail store on approximately five acres. There will be no other development on the remaining property, and the project will be served with well and septic. The reason for tonight's meeting is really for me to try to address some of the neighbor concerns, and some of the things that were brought up at the planning board meeting on So, this is a map showing Grace Chapel and all the surrounding Dollar General stores. As the technical review committee pointed out in Policy 4.6, "The project does offer convenient neighborhood retail services located close to residential areas with the goal of reducing automobile travel distances to promote better livability in the community." Dollar General stores by design serve small trade areas. If you look at the map, there's a trade area within, right around Grace Chapel. They are not regional draws like grocery stores or Walmarts, and the trade areas typically serve about a three- to four-mile radius. As you can see from the map, there are no other stores within a 20-minute round trip from Grace Chapel, which is a considerable amount of time to drive if you're just trying to go pick up a couple of convenience items.
Hey, guys, let's do this. Everybody will have the opportunity to speak, but we have always had such polite meetings, and so let's give everybody the opportunity to talk, and that will be presented to everybody.
We will be respectful to this gentleman, and we'll be respectful to anyone else who wishes to be heard tonight.
So, within that trade area, where you see the circle of other stores, there's really not much of a meaningful shopping opportunity in that whole area. Now, Dollar General has a market research department, and they track where their customers They have the data to, I guess they pull the data from credit cards and whatnot. There were some comments made at the planning board meeting that, you know, if you drive to work or whatnot, you pass other Dollar General stores. Well, that is their business plan. Every few miles, they have a trade area. And Dollar General's research department has determined that there are enough existing customers in the Grace Chapel area to support a store. So, as supported by the, at the TRC, this convenience is reasonable and in the public interest, and it gives the community shopping options that they currently do not have. Another big item that was discussed at the meeting was just the potential for traffic problems. According to NC DOT, NC 22 carries approximately 2,800 cars a day, which by itself is really not a lot of volume. Now, we understand that the school traffic in the morning and afternoon creates a different dynamic, and as such, we've consulted with Mickey Pate with NC DOT extensively on how to address that. On this slide, the red lines, if you can see them, are the existing, is the existing boundary of NC 22, just a two-lane road. This slide shows the outlining, green would be the road improvements that we would propose for this project. We would widen the road and add turning lanes, and these are all mandated, and the design is dictated by NC DOT. And this is what NC DOT basically tells us would make the road safer, and would be able to accommodate the extra traffic the store generates. This next slide. "The highlighted areas should represent the dedicated right and left turn lanes that will be built solely to serve the store. Note that there will be free-flowing traffic north and south to accommodate the normal and school traffic, so it will not be hindered during peak hours." In all, the road improvement project entails about 700 linear feet of road widening and turn lanes, tapers, and this will be required by NC DOT for us to get a driveway permit. Now, Dollar General has agreed that store truck deliveries will not occur during peak hours for pickup or drop-off at the school, and we can coordinate with the school those exact time windows. As the developer, we will agree to set the construction schedule of these road improvements during the summer months when school is not in session, and if there's any summer camps that, or other events that are at the school, we can coordinate with them as well. In all, this road project can be done in a week. We believe that the road widening will actually improve the traffic issues around the school, and the costs will be borne completely by the developer with no use of NC DOT funds or taxpayer money, which is clearly in the public interest. There was also a lot of discussion about just the fact that the store is across the street from the school. Now, we've been building stores for Dollar General for over 15 years, and we've built a lot near schools, across the street of schools. For example, we built a store in Chikadee in Pitt County, which is about 15, 20 miles southeast of Greenville and northwest of La Grange. The Pitt County school system raised no opposition to the project and actually thought that it would be helpful to have a resource for teachers to get supplies on short notice, drinks for the kids, whatnot, because they similarly have a long travel distance to the next, closest shopping options. As we outlined on the first slide, there's, it's a 20-minute round trip for anyone at the school to go buy any supplies for the school. So, we think that the store could be seen as an amenity towards, for the school as well. Now, being that the school is K-5, the students at the school are not driving, and if the schools like where my kids go to school, they don't let K-5 kids leave, walk outside, walk across the street, go visit a store. So, we feel like that there will not be much of a negative impact as far as safety for the school. The traffic improvements should keep the store traffic from negatively affecting the school traffic, and frankly, the school is the focal point of the community, as is the church, and it is a logical place to have a retail store. Another topic that came up in the meeting is the potential for crime. Now, we've built over 200 stores in North Carolina over 15 years, and we've involved in dozens of rezoning cases. I've never had the subject of crime come up in a rezoning case to the extent that it's been spoken about here. As a property owner, we've owned a lot of these stores. We own other commercial properties, and we have property management company. I actually went back through all of our property management logs to look and see where we've had crime issues, robberies, and whatnot. There's been no discernible distant difference between our Dollar General properties, shopping centers, office buildings. We just didn't see it. The thing about crime is, if you say, it's hard to say that a store creates crime. Crime is something that can be inherent in a community. There are many factors that create those situations. These stores are designed to serve the community, and whether or not the crime is there, it's going to be, it has to be inherently present in the community for it to be an issue with the store. Dollar General's market planning department actually rates all of their store locations with a crime index. For example, we've built plenty of stores in tougher areas of North Carolina. If we build a store in those areas with high crime indexes, they come with roll-up cages and security for the HVAC systems. Grace Chapel did not even register with the crime index. So, we feel like just blanketly saying that a store creates crime in an area that there probably is not much crime at all is not a very fair argument. Now, one of the main concerns of the community is preserving the rural character of Grace Chapel, and we 100% respect that. While the TRC recommends approval based upon the technical aspects of the project, we understand that the community looks at it in a more subjective way. They see preserving a way of life, the rural nature of the community, and frankly, a lot of them probably just don't want anything to change, which is, once again, completely Now, we've, we had a couple of rezonings over the last few years where we had very similar concerns from the neighbors. One that I've got some examples of here is a project we did in Guilford County, in a little community called Brown Summit. Brown Summit is a neat little historic community. There's a church there, some nice homes, and that's about it. The neighbors there did not have a problem with having shopping options, bringing shopping options. They did not have a problem with Dollar General necessarily. What they had a problem is with, is does it fit in the community visually? So, I want to show some pictures here. This is what probably most people think about when you see, think of Dollar General. Brick front, metal side building. It doesn't win any design awards. I'm not going to say it does. Tall pylon signs. That's the typical Dollar General. Now, in Brown Summit, what we did is we sought ways to make this building blend into the community. We found a picture of an old general store in Brown Summit called the Brown Summit General Store. Brown Summit General Store is long gone. It's a pile of rubble right now, but it was something that was the only business in Brown Summit. So, we took our design, and we basically copied the Brown Summit General Store. Had the batten board, board and batten front, the shutters, continuous awning across the front, the pop-up front, a pop-up parapet. This is all hardy plank, and it has hardy plank down the side. We have the brick new wall. We reduced the sign height. We even added the corbels underneath the continuous awning, because we saw that on the Brown Summit, Brown Summit pictures, the general store pictures, I'm sorry. A couple of years ago, we had another rezoning in Hurtford County, where the, again, the neighborhood is, was Albemarle Plantation. I don't know if you're familiar with it. It's a boating community down the Quimmins River. And again, the neighbors were not opposed to Dollar General necessarily, but they were opposed to having a store that did not fit into the community visually. So, we took this concept a little bit further, and this is what we would propose for Grace The difference on, this one's a little bit different color, but the difference in this one and the Brown Summit one is there's no internally lit signs. That sign across the front, the Dollar General sign, is externally lit only with gooseneck lights, so at night, you don't see that beacon, that yellow beacon that would stand out in a rural community like Grace Chapel. There will be no parking lot lights in the parking lot, no freestanding poles. Those arms that come off the building are full cutoff LED fixtures. The sign shines straight down, but yet, they're powerful enough to light up the parking lot so you have a safe environment, but you don't have the light pollution that you have when you have 20-foot parking lot poles. On the monument sign, we matched the materials on the building. This is not an internally lit sign. You can see it's lit by the goosenecks, and so when you're driving through the rural community at night, you don't see that big yellow beacon from five miles away. And so, this is what we call our dark sky model, where you just reduce light pollution. You have building materials that blend in more with neighboring homes, the church, and it's more of our rural prototype. So, now, the planning board denied the case based upon the following findings. Policy 6.16, in which the county's rural character should be preserved by minimizing density and maintaining buffers in open space. As shown on the aerial, this project has over 83% open space. Of the five acres, only .8 acres will be impervious surface, so it's a very low density. The property line to the rear is over 400 feet, more than a football field away from the back of the building. That area back there will never be developed. It'll just be left as green space. The home to the north, we have proposed a 55-foot-wide landscape buffer that we can install. The balance of the site frontage will be professionally landscaped with native trees, sod, and irrigation. So, in addition, you know, we will bring in the rural prototype that will blend in with the community and other buildings a little bit better. So, for these reasons, we feel like, well, now, all of these will also be on our site plan. So, for these reasons, we feel this project is consistent with the Randolph County Growth Management Plan, is reasonable in the public interest. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
George, the first slide you showed, showed the other Dollar General stores and the circle, are those all stores that y'all did?
We did that Ashburg, okay, we've done Levelcross.
How about Climax?
We did the one downtown. We did the one south on 220. Did the one that came out of the county shopping center on Fayetteville Street, and we did that one out on 64 coming into town, and we did the one out Gare and Town Road.
Do you own the real estate?
We still own the one downtown and the one on North Fayetteville.
So, they are a tenant in those stores? Are these all, are these are all company stores except?
They're all, Dollar General does no franchises. They're all company stores, and we act as just their developer and landlord. So, we did own all these stores at one time, but we, some of them we have sold. And we did Coal Ridge. You know, we're working on one down in Grantsville. We did Bennett. I heard somebody talking about Bennett.
Are you doing the one over near Archdale?
Yes.
At the bypass?
Anything from, basically, Archdale's is about as far west as we go. We go all the way to the coast, and there's about four or five developers in North Carolina. So, that's about, that's as far west as we go.
Questions?
Could you go to the, I think it may be the next slide? I guess the entrance there to the property is right across from the school.
Correct.
Entrance there. I know, I think we did one years ago out on 64 near Tabernacle, out that way, and I don't remember. There was an issue with entrance there that I think they didn't want off of 64, and it seems to be that might be an issue with traffic coming out of the school with left turns and that kind of thing. Is that an issue?
We tried, we talked about flipping it so that the driveway was more to the south. DOT wanted us to leave it on the north side so we could have more tapers, longer tapers, and the turn lanes fit in better, because if it was down the south side, then the turn lane and tapers went through the intersection, and it was just kind of an awkward movement.
There was no talk of having the entrance off of Old Liberty Road?
Well, that's a different piece of property.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
If you look at the, let's see, that aerial, there's a.
Yeah, yeah, there's a buffer there.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
I will say, as he's walking away, that I've talked to several of the people in, I'm sorry, in the Tabernacle area, and they are very well pleased. Of course, it's a different type of community, but they have been very pleased, and the teachers at the school absolutely love it. So, love having it in the community, same in Ramsewer, even though there's other buildings there. The staff uses, at the school, uses the Dollar General a lot, because it's a quick in-and-out, and when you already have a full schedule and you need to buy things for your classroom, they can find what they need there, so.
Madam Clerk, how many speakers do we have?
Mr. Venders was number one. There are four more signed up.
Who's first?
Caitlin Robbins.
Caitlin Robbins.
You can pull that down further.
Okay, thank you. So, I'll be talking to you about a few things today, one of which will be the traffic. Another are some images of a local Dollar General and the cleanliness of it. So, and I also have some letters from some of the other residents in the area. So, I'll read those first. This is from Ms. Ellen Lineberry. She lives at 5520 NC Highway 22, which is beside of the school, the only residence on the other side of the school. So, she is a fifth generation living on property with a view of the proposed land. Dollar General Store is asking the board to consider rezoning to highway commercial, and she wrote this for the last board meeting, but it still pertains to this. Their request for rezoning is to build a store. It is known the name Dollar General Store connotes value, destruction of real property, and the peaceful rural community we enjoy living in Grace Chapel. If the rezoning occurs, that destruction will be felt many miles away in all directions. In 1840, the first generation where I live, Jesse Pugh and Kaiza Lineberry lived their entire life in a restored log cabin on the property. They raised nine children. One became a leader in the great. One became a leader in the Grace Chapel Methodist Church and a justice. Many of the generations who lived on this land are buried in the Grace Chapel Church Cemetery. My mother, Hilda Limeberry, lived 100 years here and is buried in the cemetery. This community is about remembering their ancestry and enjoying the peaceful environment, the rural area of Grace Chapel and Douse. There is one reason Dollar General Store requests rezoning in this location. It is the monetary gain for them from heavy traffic coming from the church and the school. In my view, the children and teachers at Grace Chapel School will be the most affected if the rezoning occurs. Children will hang out at the store and all that entails, and teachers will be controlling the results. It will surely diminish real estate values of adjoining property and generally affect surrounding areas. I respect, I respect the board and its function. I sincerely ask you to leave the proposed property and the current zoning residential agriculture. I also have one from Mr. Han, and Will Han is the one that will be directly face the results of this Dollar General as he lives next door to it. So, "Good evening, my name is Will Han, I'm a long-term resident of Grace Chapel and live directly beside of the proposed rezoning property. I have lived in this area since 1989 and have enjoyed the simplistic country life. I do not understand thy priority in rezoning this land for commercial use. Has the committee considered the destructive forces that will be brought upon approving the commercialization? If approved, the overall way of life here in Grace Chapel will be changed. There will be no more constraints against city life. In addition, it is no secret, my property value will be severely devalued should a retail store be allowed to sit adjacent to mine. I am requesting from the bottom of my heart consideration in this matter, along with the numerous neighbors who take residence here away from the hustle and bustle of city life, that will be an unwanted addition to the newly developed store. Quite simply, any one of us could have been approached for the amount of money paid, and we would have gladly taken this land off the hands of not only the present owner, but the previous owner for the price that they paid." And next, I will just give you the pictures I have. I took these, I'd say, less than a week ago, and I was standing in line to check out, and I couldn't help but notice under the shelves. And so then, I got to looking around, and I noticed more and more. So I'll show them to you.
What are these pictures of exactly now?
I'm sorry?
What are, what are?
These are things that have fallen off the shelves that no one has picked up, and if you, I mean, they've been there for a while, they're pushed all the way underneath the shelf, and it's things that you can see as soon as you come into the store. It's like old, it's like soap containers that never got picked up, just anything that had fallen off the shelf, they're just laying there on the floor, pushed up underneath. So my name is Caitlin Robbins, I'm a resident of the Grace Chapel area and student at Providence Grove High School. On behalf of the local teenagers within the community and surrounding areas, I am continuing my concern about the proposition to establish a Dollar General here on Highway 22. Again, I live at 5419, which is one house over from the proposed site. Each morning and afternoon, I travel from my home across from Grace Chapel Elementary School to Providence Grove High School, and in prior years, to Northeastern Randolph Middle School. I have a front row seat to the chaotic traffic in the mornings and afternoons, and have to try to navigate it each day. In the mornings, a man named Danny Alred conducts the traffic in front of Grace Chapel. He volunteers his time, he isn't paid, he doesn't reap any benefit except for helping people get where they need to go. His time is to make sure parents, students, and community members get to their destination safely. Without his help and direction, the Grace Chapel traffic would be a complete and utter mess, and I for one would never be able to leave my driveway. I sit there most mornings for at least 10, 15 minutes before I can get out. There's heavy traffic coming from both ways, and they, most mornings, they don't stop unless you just go. There are at least three teen drivers that live inside the school zone that have to drive and navigate this traffic. In the next few months, there are two more young ladies who will be getting their license and will also have to drive through this. It is already dangerous for our children without the added traffic from the Dollar General. The bus parking lot is also a one-way in and out access. How would buses easily and safely access their parking lot? With the heavy traffic brought from the Dollar General and the school, and on top of that, delivery slash large trucks, it would be a difficult task. These buses are carrying people's children, many of whose parents are sitting in this room today. We would be putting our children and our bus drivers at risk. In the afternoons, there are also students who get dropped off in front of the Grace Chapel traffic, oh, sorry, in front of the Grace Chapel School. The heavy traffic makes this an increased danger for our children. Also, if there were to be people sitting across at the Dollar General, they are able to pick up on patterns and times of when the children are getting on and off the bus and where they go. The speed limit inside the school zone is 35 miles per hour. With the new store being built, how can we ever ensure that people are following this law? Dollar General wants to bring in and benefit from the traffic, the same traffic that will put our children, residents, teen drivers, and community members at risk. Another important and prominent issue within our community is the use and movement of farm equipment. Just this year, during harvest season, I watched as a lady flew past a tractor in an SUV on a double yellow line, not even a mile from the school. As an agriculture advocate, it is important to remember the difficulty our farmers face as they try to safely navigate from one field to another or to gas stations in the community. The influx of traffic poses a greater risk for our farmers and their workers as they try to safely make a living and provide for the community. Lastly, the new plan for the Dollar General plans to take land from surrounding neighbors, both of which are against the proposed location and development of the Dollar General. It is morally wrong to take their land without them being okay with this development. There is no amount of compensation to ever equate to the loss they would both be taking. I hope that when reviewing this matter, you are able to see the danger it proposes to the teen drivers, children, residents, and community members within the area. I do not want to see this community take a loss due to a corporation that can and will easily continue on and build in another location without a second thought. I urge you to disapprove the proposed rezoning, and from a recent meeting and discussions with my neighbors, I know my opinions are shared by many who have not managed to attend or write letters. And also, before I leave, on the traffic pattern picture, on the side of the road, there's a, a sign that says "Jesus is Lord" over Grace Chapel. I just am curious what will happen to the sign, how it will be maintained. That's an important part of our community, so. And before I leave, I'll give you the pictures I have of the traffic.
Good afternoon, my name is Thomas Truitt, I live at 5419 NC 22. I believe you guys have some of this information, but I'm going to give it to you just in case.
This first folder is the petitions we have signed, I'm at 321 after this meeting.
It's included in the packet, unless there's just an update.
There's an update, and this is the comments that you guys do have.
Do you mind going back, go back to the, because so everybody can hear you online, and so we can.
There's 785 calls from the August meeting for the past two years. I was able to contact Randolph County Sheriff's Office and get the police calls for the past So good afternoon, my name is Thomas Truitt, I reside at 5419 NC 22, the one property over from the proposed site. I do not support Dollar General in our community, and many of my neighbors feel the same way. I have two items I would like to give you. First is a recent petition that we have, and the second is the 911 calls, like I said, from all the Dollar Generals in Randolph County. We currently, we're, like I said, we're at 321 signatures on this proposed petition. We were at 350 on the last board meeting. At the back of that, there is a list of reasons why people sign this petition. A lot of them talk about the traffic aspect of it, but most of them actually talk about the crime and the safety of the school, the children, and the community. The second is a list of calls made to 911 from all Dollar Generals in Randolph County in the past two years. The call list came directly from the Randolph County Emergency Services, 917 calls in two years. These calls list things like overdose, DUI, intoxicated person, larceny, theft, armed robbery, assault, and many more. Events like these that are close to the school are not why we should allow our students and community to be around. If issues were to escalate, how would it be handled? Would the school be forced to go into lockdown? How is that beneficial to our children and to our community? The other evening, while having a conversation about the proposed store, a gentleman asked me, I didn't think Dollar General had that much crime, or I didn't think Grace Chapel had that much crime. I politely informed the gentleman that there isn't that much crime, and we'd like to keep it that way. I have two more photos to present. These two photos were taken just over the past couple of days at local Dollar Generals that were on the map that Glenda Forrest presented. Most of Dollar Generals are short-staffed or understaffed, closing at 5 o'clock, closing multiple days a week. I just found out this afternoon that the store in Level Cross closed on Saturday at 5:00 because they only had one worker. The Planning and Zoning Board denied Glenda Forrest's request based on, and I quote from Mr. Cable, that he does not think the proposal in this location is consistent, reasonable, and in the public interest. The Pla, the Planning Board also referenced that Dollar General wanted to put stores 12 to 15 miles apart from existing stores. Mr. Cable mentioned, and I quote, "This location goes against the rule provided by the developer." I moved, I moved here four years ago from Jacksonville, Florida. I'm, I'm born and raised in North Carolina. I joined the military, decided to come back. I lived in a community where we had convenience. When I moved up here, I wanted to be in a rural area. I don't mind driving 10, 15, 20 minutes to get something that we need. I live in this community because it is rural, you know, I don't have the conveniences that you would have in a city setting. I would urge the board to keep the area rural and the way that it is. While sitting in church on Sunday, my preacher brought up a very good point. It talks about relationships, relationships with God, relationship with friends and community. He stated that proximity determines responsibility. He is a pastor at a church in Pleasant Garden, his friend is a church in Asheville. Our pastor is a pastor at his church. His friend is a pastor at the pastor at the church in Asheville. I bring this up because it pertains to the day. Those of us that live in Grace Chapel community are responsible by proximity. We're responsible for keeping our community safe, clean, helping others voice their opinion, even though they could not be here this evening. Thank you.
I just, I just glanced at the first page or so, there's some names from like Charlotte, do they own property in the area, or?
No, sir, I do not know. I know, we do, we have another petition that we did, did, and it was, we walked around to neighbors, and Mr. Tate, Stephen Tate has that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Tate.
We appreciate the opportunity to speak before you tonight about this matter. My name's Steve Tate, I live on Jess Hackett Road, one mile from Grace Chapel. I grew up on a corn farm in Illinois, but my family decided to root itself in Grace Chapel in 1984, which in the comparison with some of my neighbors who have been in their families in the community for 400 years, I'm not quite that good, or 200 years, but we've been here a long time and we love the area. You've, you've heard about our concerns about traffic, you've heard about our concerns about crime. I want to address directly some of the things that were mentioned in defense of this project. The idea of a trade area is an interesting term. Also, interesting to think about a 20-minute round trip. I can confidently say to you, friends, that he sees that as a negative, a 20-minute round trip, we see that as a positive. We live specifically where we live because we want to be in a rural area with working family farms, not because we want convenient trade areas right in our backyard. He mentioned that their research department showed that, that our area was the perfect spot. Well, let's be honest, we know what the research department is. It's an algorithm that knows how many cars go through that crossroad at Grace Chapel. But their research department did not do surveys in the area of what the neighbors want, of what the community wants. He said the purpose of Dollar General is to serve the community. We don't want a Dollar General store, and we don't need a Dollar General store. It does not serve our need. We like it that we have to go to a trade area in Liberty, or Randleman, or Ashboro, that takes us 10 or 15 minutes to get there. We like it, we want it, that serves our area, not the algorithm from his research department. He mentioned that he didn't have statistics about crime at Dollar General stores. You've just been handed statistics. And if there isn't a problem with Dollar General stores in Randolph County, you'll have to explain to me why two current law enforcement officers who have students in the Grace Chapel School sought me out to say, "Please, please, please resist there being a Dollar General store. I don't want it in my neighborhood across from the school where my children go," because I, every week, confront crime at Dollar General stores in the districts where I serve as law enforcement officers. Finally, I want to just say about the comment about our growth management plan. I see Mr. Johnson here tonight, I remember well, I think it must have been 2008, maybe 2007, when Mr. Johnson came to my farm, my business at Goat Lady Dairy, and spoke to a bunch of us and our neighbors. We were concerned then about a development in the Bull Run area. And he came to us and talked to us about the issue about how do we have responsible growth in Randolph County that allows for development, allows for increasing jobs and economic opportunities, and preserves some of the best. economic opportunities, and preserves some of the best things we have in Randolph County related to our rural areas and our thriving agricultural community. I remember well, he told us about this great idea he had about a growth management plan, and I was happy when in 2009 that plan was passed. Now, the sheet of paper that I passed out, you'll see from your growth management plan the quadrant of Randolph County where we live, and you'll see a green circle in the middle of that quadrant, and that's your area that you set aside for rural development, agriculture, working family farms. On the back of that sheet of paper I passed out, you'll see the 10 working family farms in the Liberty-Randleman corridor that because you set aside an area specifically to preserve farmland and working family farms, those 10 farms, including mine, have conservation easements on them, permanent conservation easements. So those lands will always be preserved and saved for farming. Randolph County is about farming. Now, if you draw a line of those 10 working family farms along the Liberty-Randleman corridor, and you put your finger right in the middle of that line, that's right where the Dollar General store would go. It doesn't fit what our county has set aside as the way to do development. I am sure there are areas in the county where Dollar General store fits. I'm sure there are trade areas where there's other things around there, a post office, other stores. That's good, that's a trade area. We don't have a trade area at Grace Chapel, and we don't want one. If you put a Dollar General store there, what precedent is that setting? It's the proverbial camel's nose under the tent. Why wouldn't there be something else? How about a, what's the name of the chain for the auto parts store? Put one of those there, but we don't want that there. We want to go to Liberty, where our dentist is, and our bank, and our church. We want to go to Randleman. We want to come to Ashboro when we do our shopping. This notion of Brown Summit, that's really interesting to me. He said, "In Brown Summit, they have a church and nice houses, and that's about it. And that's about it." What didn't he mention? Well, I have friends in Brown Summit. I'll tell you what he didn't mention, working family farms, because that's not what Dollar General's thinking about. They're thinking about trade areas, and I understand that. I understand their business model. It's obviously brilliant if all you're concerned about profit, and all of that profit going out of our community to Wall Street investors, not staying in our mom-and-pop shores. I have friends that shop at Dollar General. I don't, and the reason I don't is because I want to find a local owner, a local store, and so that my money that I spend stays in that community, so that that mom-and-pop store owner that I just spent money on will buy Goat Lady Dairy cheese, okay? And that's another reason why I just couldn't help but notice when he said, "That's about it." And the last thing I want to mention in terms of what the gentleman said was, I appreciate also that they're designing Dollar General stores that look a little nicer. Friends, for us, it's not about the visual, it's about our way of life. It's about living in the country, living around working farms, having a tractor go down Highway 22 with a baler on the back, and having to drive 20 miles an hour because I can't pass, and taking the time to just chill out a minute. We don't complain about that. That's why we live where we live, and we don't want to see irresponsible development. And you didn't want to see that kind of development, and that's why you have this excellent growth management plan, and there's no good reason to go against it. And lastly, I'm not sure about his GPS, but my GPS that I checked just before I came says that the Dollar General store in Climax is 5.9 miles from Grace Chapel, not 7, and I can go through all of the numbers he had, but we don't want to quibble about numbers, do we? Mr. Cable, at the planning board meeting, who made the motion, we all know he's in favor of growth, in favor of development, who made the motion deny, he said, "Dollar General, they got a great business model every 12 miles. Well, you don't need a Dollar General store in Grace Chapel to fulfill their business model, because we have, all around that green circle that you see on the hand that I have you, we have Dollar General stores that we can get to in 10 or 15 minutes easily." So why don't they follow their business plan, and why don't we follow our growth management plan? Thank you for the time.
Dan Ruth.
Could we hold just a second till we get this?
It was in the packet.
It's in the packet.
This is the same that was in the packet.
Oh, it's in the packet, okay. Who was the next speaker?
Dan Ruth.
Yes, my name's Dan Ruth. I live on Ruth Road, about two miles from Grace Chapel, and I will keep this very brief because I think Steve Cake covered most of everything that is important. I guess the difference is, my family moved into the Grace Chapel area around 1750. I've lived where I live now for 67 years. I'm a Grace Chapel native. I have probably, without exaggerating, 400 or 500 relatives within two miles of Grace Chapel. I know the community, they're most of my family. According to Dollar General, we live in a commercial desert. Even though I live in Grace Chapel, I've been in marketing and advertising for 45 years, and I know what market research is, and Dollar General didn't do their market research, because the reason why we live in Grace Chapel is because it's a commercial desert. We don't mind, as Steve said, driving 15 minutes. That's the whole reason why we live where we live. If I wanted a commercial store, you know, a mile from my house, I'd move to town. We live where we live because we like it, and Dollar General doesn't fit into our community. Thank you.
All right, that's all of the speakers that have signed up. And I want to ask, is anyone here who wishes to speak for this request?
After each of you speak, if you will come and sign the sheet, you do it afterwards, just when you're finished.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
I am Becky Humble, and I live on Providence Church Road, Climax, and I went to school at Grace Chapel. We had a store then, why can't we have one now? And listen to this, these people have got parents that are older. They don't want to drive 20 or 50 miles to get something.
Ms. Humble, Ms. Humble.
We need the store there.
Just hold on.
Just address us.
I want them to hear me.
They hear you.
We need the store there, so their parents won't have to drive so far to get something to eat, to get some medicine if they need it, to get something for their kids, and the kids can't go. We need that store there. We had a store before, we need a store now. And if the parents are worried about their kids going to the store, ain't they got security guards at the school? They ought to listen, or the parents ought to teach them not to go. Tell them not to go, or they will get spanked. They will get whipped if they go. And the parents can tell if they go, they'll know if they go, because they'll have something to eat that they wanted, that they shouldn't have. So we need that store down there for the old people. And what if somebody has a wreck? What if some of these people had a wreck? They couldn't go to get something way off? They would have a store right there to go to. It would be there for them to get what they need. I think it ought to be there. And I want it there. We need it there, put it there. Okay?
Thank you.
And I mean everything I said.
Do you mind signing in, Ms. Humble? Thank you.
Anyone else to speak for?
No, 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 Mr. Ruth, just hold on, just have a seat. Everybody has a chance to speak, it's not a back and forth.
Good evening.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Kathy Ruth Shelton. I am from Greensboro, Brown Summit area, and moved to the Grace Chapel area and lived there for 17 years. I have farmed, I was dairy farming for 17 years on Ruth Road. I have driven tractors.
Hold on one second. Ms. Humble, if you'd just have a seat, okay? Michelle, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I am one of the ones who have driven tractors with hay baleers and hauling silage wagons up and down Highway 22, all the way from Climax all the way to Grace Chapel. Now, there's been plenty of times that I've heard people complain about the traffic, people passing tractors. There's been times in those 17 years that people have passed me on two lanes going down Highway 22. There have been plenty of times that I have been so thirsty from baling hay that I wish that there was a store around there that I could pull in and get something to drink. I'm all for Dollar General in that area. And as far as crime, or kids, you know, gathering, or whatever, I do believe that there are more kids today that need to go to work in a place like Dollar General. If there's a shortage of help, kids need to get involved. But in that area right now, there used to be a joke that was told to me back in 1980 that Highway 421 was the Mason-Dixie line, and if you lived past Highway 421, you were considered a Yankee. Well, I crossed that line, and I come down to Grace Chapel, and I worked my tail off for 17 years. Yes, it's a small community, but as far as crime, I lived in the area where a lot of people did, you know, work. When I was in the fields, I would be on hundreds of acres that we would lease to either cut the bale, grow the corn, or whatever. And I did see some of the country boys down there growing pot on that land. So if you want to talk about crime, let's talk about the country boys that's out there in these fields. I've witnessed it, I saw it, but who do you go to? But I do believe that in that area, that it's time, that it does need growth, that children that are growing up in that area, that is a bad intersection. I will say that Grace Chapel Church and Grace Chapel School, that is a crossing there, but if the driveway was a different way, it would be good. But I do know, from the stop sign at Climax to Benny Limeberry Road, Ruth Oil Company, it's 10 miles. I have driven for so many years to see my dad, and I counted the miles how to get there. And I'd say, "Dad, if you go 10 miles, you can turn down that road, and you can find me." You know, so I mean, in that area, it is rural, and I do think that the community should grow. The elders in that community have deceased, most of them I have known for many, many years, since 1980. It is nice, I can remember before the gentleman that spoke up, the Goat Lady Dairy, I can remember when he moved in, and I thought, you know what, that's, he has a lot of people coming to his place. He has a lot of people coming from all over the states just to visit his farm. So you want to talk about being commercialized, they all come to his farm and buy cheese, they buy everything else, and then there was another farm down the road. You know, it's sad that farms are slowly disappearing, but there are bigger farms, and I know people want to keep their land, but I do believe that it is time that there should be a store there, just so elderly people really don't have to drive 15 miles because it's hard to see in the dark. There's deer out there. It's just the convenience of it, being in that one spot, because I do know that that area is so desolate that it does really need a Dollar General or something there to help everybody, and I think it would be an advantage if there were one. Like I said, I've been in that area for many, many years, and I know that for many, many years, there are going to be one or two people that their families have lived there for 400 years. I was a part of that family for many years, but now it's time for growth. Growth does happen, and if the children want to work, they can go to work for Dollar General, or they can farm. But I guarantee you, you will not find any young children today that are willing to get out there and work on those farms as hard as it is. I can't tell you of one young person right now that will go out and work seven days a week milking cows like I did for many, many years at Ruth Dairy on Ruth Road. And all the children in here, they wouldn't know what to do. They wouldn't be able to go on vacation. So they do need a place like Dollar General in order to go to work, because children do need to learn something. And maybe if this Dollar General were to hire teenagers after school, they can make some money if they choose not to farm, because farming is something that is incredible. Children do need to learn how to do that, I'm all for farming, but they also need to learn everyday life things as well. So I am in favor of a Dollar General in that area. Thank you.
Hello, how are you? Sorry. I'm Crystal Allen.
Your name?
We have...
Your name?
Crystal Allen. I live in the Grace Chapel community, I have all my life. I live on 2553 Jimmy Scott Road, where I'm two miles from the school, and I work two and a half miles from the school. We have a company, Unique Tool, on Bruce Pugh Road, which is two and a half miles. We have about 46 employees, and we also took up a signature of people there who would love to see one come. Some of them are from out of town, but they work there, so it would be convenience for us to run, get something if we need it for the shop, or for our guys if they forget their lunch. I mean, it's Randleman or Ram Store, I mean, it would just be very convenient. I wasn't really prepared to say a lot, but we, there are a lot of people in the community that would greatly appreciate the convenience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony, can I just tell you all my name? Okay, Anita Davis. I was nowhere prepared to speak this evening, but she's my sister, and so we both grew up in Grace Chapel. And as far as the traffic concerns, in the mornings, going, my daughter actually goes to Fayetteville Street Christian, which is a Ram Store, so I have to travel down 22 every morning to take her to school. And last year, she was at NERMS, but I took her out of that school because they didn't want to send kids to school. So now she's at a different school, but the traffic going there is horrible. So, I mean, I work in Ashboro, I can go to the store when I want to, but I'm all about the traffic lanes, getting in and out, and making possibly, if they ever wanted to do a traffic light there or something at the corner of 22 and Old Liberty Road, because it is a nuisance, and it's horrible. And in the evenings, when I go pick up my kids, there's not a traffic director there. So it is a nuisance, and I think that turning lanes would be awesome. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Doris Scott, I'm her mother, and the one that just talked, mother. Talking about crime and all in the Grace Chapel area, it don't come from the Dollar General. We've been broke into about three times. Our company's been broke into and stole a lot of stuff. Our company's been broke into and stole a lot of stuff. My daughter that lives on Mac Limeberry Road, she's been broke into, and my son has. So that Dollar General don't bring the crime. It's the people that go there. But we would love to see a Dollar General. It would be so convenient for all our employees and us to just run up there and pick up whatever we need. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Teresa Canoy, and I do not have a dog in this race. Don't matter one way or the other. I'm from Whitechapel. I moved seven miles south in 1983 to Parks Crossroads Church area, community. I have catered Grace Chapel's Lines Club since 2005, twice a month, first and third Monday of every month. I got girls right there now. When I went to set it up, the ice machine at the church was not working. No problem. Mr. Coley brought it from the fire department. If he had not, I'd have had means to have went and got ice. Was there times I had forgotten things that it would have been very convenient, opposite corner, to have a Dollar General, things I had forgot? I usually don't do this, and I wouldn't want to sit in any of y'all's chairs. I had a feeling that I needed to come, and the feeling I had has already been addressed, and that's of means to have basic supplies a little closer located to you. For 19 years, I saw 9/11 in a different set of shoes. It was about Sandy Bradshaw, which is from Grace Chapel. I went to school with her. This year, for the first time in the 20th anniversary of 9/11, I saw it with a different set of shoes that I'd never dreamed in my life I would have ever put on. Last year, I joined a local fire department in Ramseur. 56 years old, join a fire department? Makes no sense. I saw it in a different set of shoes, and that was a pair of firefighter boots. When I thought about this meeting tonight, I run a fire call. I'm still not certified to do on the front line. I was assigned to put a gentleman's groceries up. He had failed coming home from getting his groceries. There in Ramseur, he has a major local grocery store, a Family Dollar, and a Dollar General. All the items that I put up from his shopping trip was from Dollar General. I visited Steve Troxler, and I've been to that very nice Dollar General just because of the look of it on the outside. I sympathize with everyone that lives in that community. They have very valid points. But I know that population, I have, I'm very fortunate. I've never walked in that set of shoes. That might would benefit from having basic supplies a little closer. I'm very blessed that I've never walked in those shoes. Thank y'all.
Okay. I'm Shannon Beck. I live five miles or five minutes from Grace Chapel. I spoke to you guys the last time that we had this meeting. I'm coming to as a mother, but I also work in the school system, so I'm bringing a little different perspective, I guess, to say, because I'm in the school every day. So in regards to when the developer spoke, I understand all of it. I shop at Dollar General. I love convenience. I'm a mom, work full-time, love convenience. I also get the privilege, because of staffing shortages like they addressed at Dollar General, I get to also drive one of those big yellow things that hold all the children. Actually drove one today before I came here. And when I was looking at how the road was set up, in my mind, bringing a bus across a lane this way, a turning lane, and then another direction this way when you have school traffic, if you're trying to turn left to proceed towards the stop signs, in my mind, that's an issue for me, because I'm looking at it different again. Or if I'm sitting at that stop sign trying to turn left, and again, I brought this up the last time, cars do not want to be behind a yellow bus. I mean, before I drove one, I didn't want to be behind one. I mean, be honest, how many people want to be behind a bus that does not go over 45 miles an hour? I mean, so cars darting out in front of us, and they don't stop on a dime, because you have, and you have precious cargo on those things. If I had a child on there, I'd want to make sure that whoever was driving that bus did all they could to make sure my kid got home. And the other issue I think a lot of people have is, location is a big issue because it is at the school. If it was in a different location, I don't know that it would be as big of an issue. But being that close to our school, I think that has drawn a huge issue. I agree that the store does not bring the crime, but it can also bring it, in a sense, because you are across the street from a school. Grace Chapel is an older school. Most of the classrooms open to the outside versus a lot of our new schools, which most of the classrooms open to the inside. So you can lock an outside door and keep a intruder out in most new school settings. Grace Chapel, my son right here, went there last year. He spoke to me on the way here, getting his feedback. He is now at Nirmes. And how he would feel on a daily basis, because he was in one of those classrooms last year where the door opened up, and he would have full view of that Dollar General. And just getting some ideas, and I also spoke on this last time, is we have these kids back in school. Our school board just today, we were mask or optional, and one of the parents spoke that they took their kid out of one of the school systems because they weren't wanting to send, wanting, weren't able to go to school. We'll just put it that way. Not every parent has that option. I mean, what school that their kid is may be the only school that they can send their kid to. So in this sense, if there is a call to 911 for that Dollar General, that then puts that school on lockdown. That then puts potentially Providence Grove on lockdown, Franklinville and Nirmes, because we're within a certain mile radius. If you, and I was also talking to my son about this, if you think about this, how many times is that kid going to have to be put on lockdown before they're scared not to come back to school? And then that puts that parent in the situation of, now what am I going to do? Because they may not have the means or the financial stability to just pick up and move or get that kid to another school. This is things that goes through my mind. Everybody else kind of had a different scenario of it. And then they brought out the Brown Summit. I love the building. Looked very nice. But in my mind, why not put your focus in approving the stores that you have and maybe not building more and more and more? Again, I love Dollar General, shop there quite often. And then he also brought up that K through five students aren't driving, that it's the parents driving. I agree. But we have a high school five minutes, 2.9 miles away from Grace Chapel, that those kids travel that road. We also have a high school student here that travels that road, so she knows firsthand. My daughter traveled that road. A man proceeded from the stop sign. She was coming down 22. He never saw her. He admitted he never saw her. He pulled out. At the last minute, she turned her wheel. She chose the ditch instead of T-boning that gentleman in his driver's side door. My daughter was fine. He was completely fine, but that's how quickly something can happen. And I know we've talked about the traffic. Yes, there's not going to be hundreds of people coming out of Dollar General all at one time. No, it's not. But like my daughter's accident, it only took that one gentleman not realizing that somebody was coming. So these are things that kind of go through my mind instead of some of the other points that were brought up. And I think that the buffers are great that he was speaking of to go between Dollar General and the neighbor adjacent to him, but like, I've seen a lot of solar panels going up, and then you have all the trees and the nice shrubs and the bushes that are put up between the houses to kind of block the visual of all the solar panels. A lot of them I have seen, and I know they're not the same company, but a lot of them are not maintained. There's weeds, there's, you know, they're not nicely trimmed. They're just, they're put there, and then I feel like they're left alone. My dad has one right in his backyard. You know, so that is something else that I also thought of when he was bringing up his, whatever you call it, with the trees and the bushes to make it pretty. And these are some reasons that I do not support it to be there if it maybe was in a different area or, you know, something that could be worked out where it's not at, directly at the stop right here in the school right here, because to me, that entrance and exit right there doesn't make sense. But thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak for? Anyone else other than the previous speakers, those that have already spoken, who is opposed? Any new speakers that are opposed?
Good evening. My name is Crystal Chaney. I live on 5458 Old Liberty Road.
You dropped your mask.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
I live at 5458 Old Liberty Road. My mother-in-law, Jeanette Chaney, lives at 5085 Highway 22, right across the field from me. Her house is on the right of Old Liberty on 22, across the street from the church. And we do not want this. I wish that, I think the man was, Tom Kemp, has contacted my mother-in-law this week, kind of harassed her a little bit, and I think he's with the real estate company for the Dollar General, wanting to know reasons why we don't want it. I really wish they would have done this beforehand. I mean, they wouldn't be going through all this trouble. Crime, I've lived there over 10 years. My house has been broken into four times. My children were scared to death. I have three, one 17, 10, and five. We don't know what's going to happen, but we don't want to take that chance. The intersection at Old Liberty Road and 22, my mother-in-law, like I said, she lives right there in front of the church. We have seen numerous car crashes, numerous. We have went out there and helped people. People from the church have run out and done first aid. We don't want to see that. Traffic's going to be worse. So I am not for the Dollar General. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am. Ma'am, you need to sign. Thank you.
Hey, y'all. My name is Carol Campbell. I live on Kismil Road, and I've lived there my whole life. I really wasn't prepared to say anything, and it seems like they've done a really good job of explaining why we didn't want it. But I will say, if you look up businessinsider.com, it states that Dollar General stores are a high-crime hotspot that put the staff and the community in danger, and this was posted on 10/23/21. And the reason for that is they're understaffed, they're, they're in the isolated areas. This is directly across from our school. This is not good. Eventually, this is going to affect school. Also, I want to state, there are 18 school buses that go back and forth two times a day there. That's not including the EC buses, underage drivers, and all the traffic in general just going in. This is a dangerous area and poorly planned. That's all I got to say. Thanks.
Hey, my name is Cindy Loughlin, and I just want to clarify, we have a preschool right there at the church. Nobody's brought up a preschool, and it's three days a week. So it's right there at it too. And we have to go through the parking lot to the playground. I mean, I don't know if this is going to bring more traffic through the church, people turning around. I don't know. But just to clarify, there is a preschool there too. That's all I have to say.
My name is Derek Lee. I live at 1386 Ridgewood Road in Franklinville, around four miles, four minutes south of this intersection. Convenience, no. We chose to live in this area because of the rural setting, because of the great neighbors. We don't mind driving out to get our groceries or whatever. I have two locations, round trip, 18 minutes or less from my house. We don't need it. We don't want it. It is not necessary. That's all I got to say.
Gentlemen? How you doing? I'm Tim Holloway. I'm at 5491. I'll be three driveways down from the proposed site. I can see a lot of, a lot of both sides. I'd hate to be sitting where you're sitting tonight. I will say that there's, there's been a few things that's just jumped out, and I'm just trying to be quiet. I am against, 100% against it, just because I don't know where they're getting their mileage from, but I live there, and it is less than six miles to Climax, and like I said, that's a very nice Dollar General, and I use it. The round trip thing, I don't understand where they're getting that. And I'm not going to complain about the traffic, because to be honest, we have only lived there about three years. I bought some land right across from the school, basically, and I purposely moved there. We was out in the county anyway, was out at Level Cross. And, you know, we decided to move a little farther out. People ask me, do I like development or do I like the country better? I was like, when I was in my development over there at Woodfield Acres, right beside Victory Junction, I loved the place. Great place to live, great neighbors. Is it better to be on, in the development or out, out in the, on the piece of property? I like them both. But the thing it is, I chose to be out there. I chose to be across from the school. Some of the things I've noticed is the proposed turning lanes ain't going to help the traffic one bit. I've still got the traffic there. I see a turn lane, but it's still two lanes. It's one going this way and one going that way. What does that got to do with anything? I can hear Tabernacle School way out there. Well, there's nothing out there. I don't know where the nearest store is out of Tabernacle or Brown Summit. Brown Summit's way off, too. We're pretty close to everything. I mean, we, we are out, but we are close to Climax. We are close to Ramseur. We are close to Ramseur and Liberty. I can be at any of those places in, any of them in less than 10 minutes. The lady that addressed about living on Providence Church Road, yeah, that's true. You know, she would be close, but there is a Dollar General at the end of Providence Church Road. They just put it down there. So, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out pros and cons, but we moved out there on purpose. I think the, the people that are actually really affected by the area is us, and we don't want it. And if you're four miles down the road or three miles down the road, you're just that much closer to Ramseur or Climax or, or, you know, Providence Church Road down there in Level Cross. And we do have traffic. We do have kids. We have people running all over the place. It's a beautiful place. I don't really know why we need another one. So I'm 100% against it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I don't really know why, um, we need another one. So I'm 100% against it. Thank you.
My name is Jill Minnick, and I hate speaking in public, but my husband asked me to come because he couldn't be here, so. Some things that come across to me as the gentleman was talking about addressing the issues that were at the last meeting, because I wasn't there, but my husband was, and one of the things, talking about Brown Summit, um, I just Googled, their population's about 12,000. I couldn't find Grace Chapel's population, but Climax is 4,000. So that's three times the size of Climax. Grace Chapel, we don't have a stoplight, we don't have a post office, it's just a little community. There's nothing else there. The, um, cleanliness that they brought up about the one in, I don't know which one it was, but the one in Climax, I go there because it's about six miles from my house. I live two doors up from the school. My son and I go in there the other day, and he tells me, well, that's Crackhead Suzie there working, because that's what everyone knows her as, apparently. That's not her real name, because I can't remember, but the fact that that's the type of employee that they choose to have there. And I, you know, I don't know that I want my teenage son working there if that's who they also employ. I have a teenage son that'll be 16 in December. He will be driving up and down that road. The traffic is horrible, and for those that think the turning lane is a positive thing, well, we should go to the DOT and get the lanes widened just for the fact that there's a lot of traffic there. That's an awful price to pay to get the road widened because of adding a Dollar General. I don't think that that is gonna be sufficient in that tight little area, just adding the turning lane to the extra people that you're gonna have coming in. They mentioned that, um, Liberty and Ramsor, um, that they enjoy having that in their town. I enjoy going there too. It's a different type of town. They have grocery stores, they have gas stations. In Grace Chapel, we have none of that in that area, and we're happy about that. We don't mind driving some other ways. I used to drive 35 miles to Greensboro to work. I chose to live out there for a reason. He mentioned there won't be parking lot, lots. My husband is a deputy, um, he's been law enforcement for about 25 years, and that's why he spoke last time, was to kind of bring in that aspect of it. You know, not having lights, yes, that's gonna help us with the looking at it and not having it real bright, but that also, um, leads to parking lots that aren't, don't have lights in it. You're gonna automatically, regardless of what store it is, when you have something like that in a rural area, it leads to more crime by the fact that people are out there, they're not being policed as much out there, so you're gonna have more crime because, you know, who wants to meet up somewhere out in the middle, you know, where there's a lot of people to see you? After the school's gone, there's not gonna be a lot of traffic out there, and you're gonna have people there attracting suspicious activity, drug, you know, deals, whatever. It's not because it's Dollar General, it's because it's a rural business out there, isolated in a rural area, and he sees that at work. Um, you know, those are the main things that I have, you know, driving that far, I live two doors up, I Googled that as well, because I knew it was about seven miles up to Climax. It's, it's between six and seven miles from my driveway to the Climax up there to go to that Dollar General. And then, of course, there's other ones that are probably just a little bit longer from there, but, um, it seems like we have, you know, you're, you're wanting this to be to your patrons. We are the patrons. We don't want it. It seems like most of the people who did want it were in one family. I think that, you know, when we see all the other people, this is your market, and your market's telling you that we're not gonna support it. So I think that it, it wouldn't be a good idea, basically. And my name is Jill Minnick. I live at 5558 NC Highway 22 North, and we've been there for about eight years, been in the county for 20-some. Thank you.
My name is Bob Deason. I live at 5777 NC Highway 22 North. Uh, got a small farm there. Uh, sitting back there listening to things tonight, and, uh, one thing struck me was it's, uh, it, it seems to be a, a question, a change versus leave us alone, leave our way of life alone. Uh, I'm reminded of the area I live every time I drive up and down 22, which is right there in front of my house. My good neighbor, Ms. Gibson, uh, right across from her farm, uh, there's a caution sign, a warning sign, and you've all seen it. It's a, it's a diamond-shaped yellow sign that warns traffic. It's a farming area. It's got a, an image of a farmer, a straw hat on a tractor. I like seeing that sign because it reinforces to me the community that I live in. Uh, I think the problem I have in my head is, I'm not, and I, I don't think a lot of my neighbors are, looking to change things the way they already are and the way things are zoned. I knew when I came to this area 20-some-odd years ago what I was getting into. I chose that area for the very reasons that it's a rural area. I go to Dollar General, I, I frequent Dollar General, I mentioned this last time we had a hearing. It's six miles from my house. But as I said before, I get what I need, and I like Dollar General in my rearview mirror, because I know on my way home, I'm gonna pass hayfields, and I'm gonna pass horses and cattle. I'm gonna pass the very things, the, the very nature of the, of the neighborhood I live in. That's why I'm there. If I wanted city conveniences, I'd pull up stakes and move to town. Don't want to do that. And I don't want to see my neighborhood changed. A gentleman that spoke first, uh, seemed to me like he was, he was, it was a sales pitch. He was telling me and a bunch of my neighbors, apparently, what we need. And not only what we need, but how he's gonna modify things and change things to facilitate this necessity that he sees that, that we've gotta have. Well, did he ever stop once and ask any of the neighbors, particularly ones that are gonna be most impacted by it, what do you think? This is gonna affect your way of life, this is gonna affect where you live. What's your opinion about it? Before we even get started. Did he go to the church, Grace Chapel Methodist Church, and speak to the pastor there one Sunday after service? What do you think? This is your neighborhood, we're fixing to come in here and change some things. What do you think about it? Did he talk to the administrators at the school? Hey, this is what we're gonna do. Uh, how's this gonna impact, uh, your students? How's gonna, this gonna impact parents coming to pick up and drop off their students? Did he ever do that? He never come to my door. It was the first I've ever seen of him. So, uh, it, we're not looking to change anything, we're looking to maintain a way of life that, that we've chosen to live in. We're looking to, to keep an environment, a rural environment, that we've chosen to live in. And, uh, I'd hate to see that changed, because I think it's the beginning of the end. Uh, Mr. Tate alluded to it earlier, and I, I'm in agreement. Where does it stop once it starts? There is an issue about crime. I was a law man for 18 years, both a city cop and a deputy sheriff, and I'll have a conversation with anybody about crime later on, but I can tell you this much, in brief, places like this are a magnet. They're a magnet for people that have lawful business, that have a need to use the services lawfully, and they're also a magnet for unlawful activity. I'll tell you that from experience. So in closing, I, I, I guess it's plain, I'm opposed to it, and I hope you'll all consider what I've said. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Okay, we're going to, uh, close the public hearing at this time and come back to the board for, um, discussion, questions, um, and for, um, actions relative to, um, the request before this board tonight. I, I, I would just say one thing, um, regardless of, of where this goes, and looking at the map where I live to, also, um, I would say Randolph County's been pretty friendly to, uh, to Dollar General stores. Uh, we, uh, as far as I know, this is the first one that's ever been contested. Um, but there's, there's a generous amount of them, and, uh, as I said, I, I go by the one there, there's one just around the, beside of Darius and Archdale where I live, and then another one that's going down at Glen Ola, but, uh, so I, I'll just make that comment. But I'll open the, the, the board, uh, for discussion or questions or, or entertain a motion when you're ready.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just as a, a question. Um, Jay, uh, would you mind addressing for us, uh, the technical aspects of, of this particular petition as to how the planning department views it?
Uh, at the time we took a look at it, um, you know, we knew it was a rural growth area. Uh, Dollar Generals, like you say, we've got several of them in the county, they tend to be geared towards smaller rural communities, or at least the majority of the ones we, we've dealt with. Um, you know, we looked in the area, we didn't really see a business quite like that. Um, the DOT addressed the traffic concerns, which really was one of the things we discussed the most. Uh, uh, I mean, I can tell you from 25 years of dealing with the school over there, congested is the word. It, it just always has been, but the DOT was satisfied, and at that point, you know, we were satisfied, and we did recommend approval.
So that's the one thing I, I was looking at here, I, I didn't, um, maybe I missed it, I didn't see a particular piece that said, uh, that you approve, approved or disapproved. I didn't see that, not that, you didn't, I just...
Yes, sir. We, we did recommend approval to the, to the planning board. Yes, sir.
And again, that's from a, and again, that's from a technical aspect of where it made all the criteria that you look at.
Yes, sir.
In every, every aspect. And from the, for the board standpoint, aren't you glad we don't see these every month?
Yes, for sure.
Uh, you guys see, see them routinely, but thank goodness you take care of the business and we don't have that, but, uh, this, this, folks, this is tough. This is tough stuff. There's great people in Grace Chapel area, and I know, I know there's pro and con here, and there's some great, great people there, uh, salt of the earth. And, uh, you know, you kind of hate to see something like this happen where you've got for and against, and, uh, uh, this is a tough decision, y'all, it really is. And, and yes, I have been to the, uh, I have been to the Dollar General on Highway 64 in Tabernacle. It's, uh, lovingly referred to as the Tabernacle, um, Tabernacle Mall, uh, there, and I've, I've been to it more than one time.
Was there any one issue with the planning board, or just the, the general intrusion into a community that's been there and, and has been left alone?
I believe it's the latter, it's just a general intrusion to a community that doesn't want them and wants to be left alone. I, I do know, I did, I remember some discussion about, uh, the local businesses there that this would, you know, impact them heavily, and I know they took that into consideration, but basically, long story short, they don't want it, and the board saw it that way, so.
Did they make much of an issue out of other Dollar General stores in the general vicinity?
The, um, John Cable made mention of the fact that there were plenty, you know, close enough, uh, and, and I think some of the people here mentioned that he, he had looked at their business model of every 12 miles or whatever, and this, this seemed to ignore that, and that was one of his main reasons for making the motion he did.
Okay, because I'm on the Board of Health, and because we work closely with DSS, I just have to make this point. Those of you that have transportation don't know what it's like not to have it. That's Title I school, and that tells me that there are people in that school who may struggle to have transportation during certain times of the day. So, um, I, I fully understand, I mean, I've driven that community several times in view of this, and really studied it. I've driven Liberty, all, you know, all the way from Ashborough to Liberty, and looked at the community. I've looked 22 North and South and looked at the community. So most people there do have transportation, but it's just important for you to understand that in Randolph County, not everybody has transportation. That's one of the biggest things that we struggle with in meeting the needs of our citizens. So I just want, while you're here, to say that to you, to give you a little something to think about if you've never thought about it. I'd also like to say that Dollar General has been a valuable community partner. They give away a lot of money in the area of literacy, and I'm a reading specialist. So I value the ability for, or the opportunity for our children to learn to read. And they work not just with children, but they work with adult literacy programs. So they've given away $85 million since 1993 in the field of literacy. And in some of the communities they've gone into, they have given the area schools $15, $20,000 to help with their literacy programs. In the Grace Chapel area, as I rode those roads, it is ob, it's obvious to me when I see the number of farms in the conservation easement, when I see the voluntary ag district signs, that there's been an intentional effort. It's not, most of us don't like change. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know anybody who does love it. Um, most of us don't like change, but my sense is not that it's not about not liking change, it's about this is, this effort has been made over this time period to keep this rural. That's a hard word for me to say, sorry. There's been an intentional effort to keep it this way, and we've done the things that you've asked us to do to keep it like this. And, um, there's something to be said for honoring that.
Mr. Chair, now, uh, I learned something tonight, and, uh, I live on the south side of 421, so that means I'm not... The other, the other thing, the other thing that I, I, I didn't think about tonight, we've mentioned Brown Summit so much. Uh, but I am familiar with the area, I, I work, uh, in, in that general direction, and, uh, comparing Brown Summit with Grace Chapel is, is apples and oranges. In, in Brown Summit, uh, there's a restoration services company, there's a AAA storage, there's a shale gas station, there's ag crop production services and agribusiness, there's a post office, all within probably 1,500 feet of that Dollar General. It, it's an entirely different area. There's some, uh, it's about a mile and a half at most from, uh, US 29, so it's, it's not, not... There's some, it's about a mile and a half at most from US twenty-nine, so it's not a good, not a good comparison in my view. The issue with the school is right there at the school. I think that could create some, some issues with the traffic, but other concerns as well. The intersection there with the school, along with the intersection down below there, it's not the best situation, especially if you've got people coming out of Dollar General, making a left turn across some traffic there coming out of the school, it's just, even with the turn lanes. But the biggest thing is the, to me, is the rural nature. It is a rural area. It's under the growth management plan. It's rural. And to me, I respect the decisions of the planning board. We don't get these very often and I don't like it when we do. The probably least, if you ask me the least favorite thing I like about this job, zoning would be it because somebody's not going to be happy when you finish up. A lot of times, nobody's going to be happy. But because of the rural nature and it's in the rural growth area of the management plan.
Yes, sir.
And this is in the center of it, I would move that, that if appropriate, I move that we deny the motion, make the motion to deny this rezoning request, to rezone the specified parcels on the rezoning application to the requested zoning district based upon determination and consistency of the findings, the reasonless and the public interest statements that are included in the planning board agenda submitted during the rezoning presentation and as may be amended, incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes as well as the site plans or any other. And any and all agreed upon revisions also incorporated into the motion and that the request not, is not consistent with the Randolph County Growth Management Plan.
I would second that.
I have a motion and a second, basically, and there's a reason for the verbiage in the motion as written by our legal counsel. It is a motion to deny the rezoning request which upholds the decision of the planning board. I think for me, and I, while we're picking on Brown Summit, I have relatives who live in Brown Summit. There's a, there's a big nursery up there, too, huge one that we've been to. But, and I think the issue of the school and just where it, where it is, it's been a little difficult for me. So, those are my comments further. Any other comments or discussion on the motion to deny? Does Hope need to read?
No, we have a motion and a second.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to the motion, no. And the motion to deny passes unanimously. Thank all of you for being here tonight. As been said, we don't like this process, but we have, we have a motion. We are adjourned.
I have nothing further.